All right, we are now recording.
Awesome. Well, good evening, everybody. This is Commissioner Tao chairing tonight's meeting. I'd like to call the meeting of the North Bend Planning Commission to order. It's Thursday, March the 11th. We'll start with the roll call and I'll just go around by C. Commissioner Bovers.
Present.
Commissioner Greenberg.
Present.
Commissioner Bush.
Present.
Commissioner Blanco.
Present.
Commissioner Moore.
Present.
And Commissioner Torgeson.
Present.
Awesome. Have I, did I miss anybody? I don't think I missed anybody. All right, so now we have an opportunity in the meeting for any members of the public to comment on any non-agenda items. Do we have any members of the public attending tonight who would like to speak? Hearing none, we'll move to approval of tonight's agenda. So Mike, I see the first order of business is selecting or electing Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair, and it looks like we've allotted three minutes for that. Is that, do you think that's sufficient?
Just depending on how long you guys take is how long that will take for that item.
Okay, it's not going to impact anything down, down agenda, is it?
I don't know.
All right. So can I get a motion, please, to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting?
I move, we approve tonight's meeting agenda notes.
I think it's been moved by Commissioner Torgeson. Is there a second?
Second.
And seconded by Commissioner Greenberg. Any discussion?
A heads up for you guys on that before you take that motion. We're trying to kind of consolidate processes in formats between our different commissions and council. And the approval of the agenda is just something that the Planning Commission has done. And so we're not proposing in the future agendas to include an approval of an agenda as an actual agenda item. So you guys always will have the opportunity to request a change on the agenda, but as an actual agenda item itself, we won't be looking for a motion on that at future meetings.
Awesome. Awesome. I think that's a nice step to take.
I agree.
Okay, so all in favor of approving tonight's agenda, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries and we have an agenda. Next item is the election of Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair, which I and Commissioner Greenberg have had the honor of serving for the last couple of years and now it's time to open it up for anybody else that might be interested in either of these positions. Mike, is this something you lead us through or we just to whoever would be interested?
Well, it's, yeah, it's really up to you guys. You could nominate others. You could nominate yourself if you're so interested, whoever might be interested.
Okay, well, let's start with who's interested in which position. And we might as well start with the Chair position. Are there any commissioners who are interested in taking the position for the next two years?
Well, I was going to nominate Judy to be the Chair and then I would be the Vice Chair. I believe that, does it say two-year terms per Planning Commission procedures? And I believe that she and I are the only two that have two years left in our, so we're kind of like the likely ones to be doing it. That was my thinking. Any thoughts?
Yeah, uh, well, I, it's not regarding your thoughts, but I think in terms of clarifying the terms, I think Commissioner Mo, Commissioner Bush, don't you still have more than two years to serve?
I believe I have three, Commissioner Mo.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, and I'm not sure. I thought my term was up sometime.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was understanding that, that pretty much everybody has only until next year on the commission, except for Judy and myself.
Really good.
I don't think that matters. I, I, in my, in my experience in the past, you know, if there is that kind of a bylaw, if somebody is selected as Chair Vice Chair with only one year left on their term, they could get reappointed for another term. Or they only serve one year of their term and then there is another election that occurs.
Yeah.
For to fill out the, the last year of that person's term as Chair Vice Chair. Correct stat? I don't want to jump in, but.
Yeah, no, that's, that's correct.
Yeah, okay. So not to circumvent the nomination, I just want to see, are there, are there any other commissioners who are interested in either of the positions? So that we can consider nominations, alternative nominations if, if necessary.
Oh, come on.
Well, I, I will say, I, I don't want to speak for you, Scott. I have certainly enjoyed serving as Chair the last couple of years. I, I think this, this commission, everybody is certainly well qualified for either position. And I think we will be well served to, from whoever would be interested in serving. It is, it's been a privilege serving as Chair, but I have really enjoyed just working with this group of commissioners for, for the last year. So I think a number of you are all eminently well qualified, should you be interested. But so Susan, why don't you go ahead and make your nominations? If you're still inclined to do so.
Sure, I nominate Judy as the Chair and I'll nominate myself as the Vice Chair.
Okay.
Any second?
Well, I'm not sure if we need to second nomination, but I think Commissioner Long, you would need to accept the nomination, assuming that you're interested.
Um, that's pretty big shoes to fill, but I, I certainly will give it my, my best. And yes, I'll accept and follow in your footsteps, hopefully.
Have no problem there. Okay, so why don't we go ahead and vote on both positions? Again, I'll just open it up one last time in case there's anybody, any commissioners who would be interested in either position. If not, let's vote on, on both positions. All in favor of Commissioner Blanco assuming the position of Planning Commission Chair and Commissioner Torgeson assuming the co-chair position for the next two years, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Awesome. We have new Chair and Co-Chair. Scott, thank you so much. It's been a privilege serving with you and I've really appreciated you stepping in. When I haven't been able to attend a meeting and some of those times have been short notice and I really appreciated that.
No, no problem. Thank you. It's been, been a pleasure being your Vice Chair and I look forward to just being a commissioner.
Yeah, likewise. Okay.
All on Judy and Susan now.
This doesn't start tonight, does it?
Yeah, Mike, you're probably more familiar.
Technically.
I think it does, but.
Yeah, usually it does. You get to take over now.
Effective immediately.
Well.
If you want to take over, you should have motioned to adjust the agenda and put it at the end.
Gary didn't want to deal with it, so.
But there isn't, so I guess Tag, you're it. Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Yay.
Well, it's going to be a pleasure and has been a pleasure certainly working with you all and learning the procedures, which we were, we did, we did some of this in the Parks Commission for a while, Mike, you know, with people taking notes and all sorts of things and so, and reporting to the council. So I just have to, you know, kind of look at the agenda here and move this along. And I will try to do that in the same fashion that both Scott and Commissioner Tao have done for us. So I guess we'll move along to item number five on the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes of the February 25th Planning Commission meeting. Do I just need a motion or we don't discuss that too? We just, yes or no, approve or don't?
I'll move, I'll move approval of the February 25th meeting minutes.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll go ahead and second that, Commissioner Mo.
Was that, was that you, Olivia?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner, I'm all flustered. I want to say just Scott and Commissioner Mo, second it, all in favor?
So Judy, just really, really briefly typically, so there's a motion provided and then a second, and then that's when you would open it up, any agenda item for discussion before the actual action on the motion. So if anybody wanted corrections to the minutes.
Oh, okay, sorry. Are there any corrections or any discussion on the meeting minutes for February 25th?
Uh, this is Gary, the only comment. I wasn't at that meeting, so I'll abstain from voting. I think there's enough of a quorum that the minutes will pass. But I'll, I'll abstain and not vote since I wasn't in attendance.
Okay.
Yes, same here, Commissioner Bovers.
Here. So we're ready to go? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposition? No. Okay.
You need to ask if there's any abstentions in this case.
Oh, any abstentions in this case?
Commissioner Tao abstains.
Commissioner Bovers abstains.
Thank you. Okay, now we're ready to approve the minutes for the February 25th Planning Commission meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Didn't, didn't we just do that?
Oh, we did? Oh, I thought you wanted, after we went through the other piece. Okay. So we're done with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, we can move to number six?
Yes.
The Form Based Code deliberation and recommendation. Jesse, you say, you're on.
Yes, I could give a brief introduction. So city staff through the assistance of the Washington State Commerce Grant is recommending a update to our downtown commercial zone zoning from a traditional segregated use type zoning to Form Based Code, which emphasizes the relationships of the buildings to their surroundings to, and the purpose of this, the purpose of the grant is to encourage affordable housing. And staff through the guidance of the Planning Commission has pursued ways to do this without increasing intensity or density by doing such things as allowing minimum, minimum densities and max, or maximum size of units. And first it was introduced January 28th to the Planning Commission and we had a list of corrections that we then made before the February 25th meeting. In between those times, there was a public comment period where we received three comments, two from local people within the Upper Valley and one from an agency. Both are all comments were favorable. We just recently received a fourth comment from Master Builders Association today, which was then forwarded on to the whole Planning Commission. So if you have not had time to check your email, there is a additional letter from Master Builders. Then during, we had the hearing on the 25th and from that, changes that were made from the hearing till now were changing the allowable heights back to the way they are currently. So there is no change in allowable heights. That specifically, the historic district is now proposed to be 35-foot maximum height, which is what it is currently versus the 45, which was, which we wanted to explore before. And then also through, from our CD Director took note that we had some kind of conflicting encroachments into public right of way. We took those out from sections DS 1A, which is page 12, and DS 1B, which is page 13. So those encroachments are now stricken. And so the stricken encroachments and the heights are the only changes that have happened between the last meeting and now. And that concludes my introduction.
Thank you. Any comments from our commissioners at all? Okay. So the tentative docket recommend, so with that, then we moved to number seven. Do we have to accept that or we just, your presentation is good?
Yeah, Judy, I think we'll, we'll need to, if the commissioner's ready, we'll, we'll want to take action.
Okay.
So if the commissioner is ready to approve, then you, you would ask for a motion to approve and a second and then, then open it up for any final discussion and then we vote and get closure on this one, then move to the next agenda topic.
Okay, so are there any objections? I mean, are there any topics that we want to discuss on this commissioners before we take a vote on this? Anyone have a comment?
I think you.
Gary, I wanted to ask, I have a comment that you made a comment at one point about businesses in a particular area and it was a generalization and you had asked for some specifics on what was allowed and wasn't allowed.
Yeah, and I think that got addressed through kind of the way it's structured now.
Do we get that? Okay.
I, I think that's been covered.
Okay.
Kind of through reference to the allowable and allowable uses in the zones already.
Okay.
But I felt like that was vague and was kind of struggling with how the uses fit into the code that we would potentially be adopting.
Just to chime in and elaborate, there was a, the, the mention of nuisances was vague in that we didn't cite the NBMC and now under allowable uses, NBMC 8.08 is now cited. So nuisances has some teeth to it.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks for clarifying, Jesse.
Okay, thank you. Did anybody else have any comments at all? So we want to make a, do we want to make a motion to move it on or do we just go to number seven? Here, we are on number seven. Okay. Oh, ten, oh, no, number six, six. Do we need any more deliberation? We're good?
Uh, we just, if we're going to take action.
Right, so we're going to take action. Do we have a motion then?
Yes, I, I have a motion.
Okay.
Uh, I move the following consideration of the staff report and meeting discussion and public hearing on February 25th, 2021, and final edits addressed at the March 11th, 2021 meeting. It's a typo in the staff report. The Planning Commission recommends to approve the amendments to NBMC 18.10, zoning regulations pertaining to the DC Zone and the new NBMC 18.12 Form Based Codes.
I hear, is there a second on that?
This is Commissioner Bush, I second.
Commissioner Bush is second, the motion made, I'm sorry. The motion has been made, seconded.
So Chair Blanco, this is Commissioner Tao. Before we take the vote, I just had a couple of comments. This is a, this is a topic, this was a code that I have struggled with a bit, conceptually trying to understand what we were really doing with it. I, I think over the meetings and the discussions, I just want to commend the staff. I, I think the documentation of what we're doing has really evolved. And not only the textual content, but the graphical content, the illustrations. I, I think the, the enhancements to help consider the building heights. I, I don't believe I could have supported this with raising the building heights in this particular area. So I'm glad that that part was taken out and the building heights are remaining the same. But just as staff has continued to evolve this, this code, you've, you've brought me along from being somewhat unsure to a little bit skeptical to now actually feeling pretty good about the opportunities that we're, we're creating and avoiding some of what I think could have been adverse impacts down there. So, so I feel good about supporting the motion and this Form Based Code and appreciate all the deliberation from the commissioners. They really want to commend staff for how you approach this and how you developed this from that initial concept that we first had the conversation on.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have a second on that? Olivia, were you the second on that motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment.
Sorry.
Um, yeah, so I, I echo Commissioner Tao's comments to some extent. I mean, I've been a proponent of Form Based Codes in the right situation for probably 15 years. I've written some myself or, and worked with consultants on others in different cities I've worked for. What was interesting to me was how this was tailored specifically to North Bend, which was good. It wasn't, you know, let's take what Bellevue might have done or what Burian might have done and, and apply it to, to North Bend. I appreciate the images and the other graphics that were provided as part of both the proposed code and then the additional height information, the renderings that were provided at the last meeting, I think were very helpful. I do support keeping the height limits the same. And I, I really think this will make a difference. I think 10 years from now, as, as properties redevelop, we'll be looking at back and, and hopefully this code will allow us to keep the character of downtown North Bend. Maybe not necessarily the way it is today, but in a way that the community supports. So I will be a yes vote on this proposal.
Thank you.
And, and thank you to staff for all your work. Sorry, forgot about that.
Anybody else want to comment, Commissioner? Okay, so we, did we get a second on that? So I can, okay. Okay, thank you. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Did I? No opposition, the motion passes and we're ready to go, I guess, with that. We, we worked real hard on that. I think you did bring us along quite well to understand what we were doing, why we were doing it. And I have to echo these words about it was tailored for North Bend. And I, I truly appreciate the thought and the time that went into that. We are Bellevue, we aren't other cities, they aren't us. And so it was very refreshing for a girl who grew up here to, you know, keep that historic district intact, to do right by our downtown. And I'm, I'm pleased to have been a part of it. So I want to thank you all for that, too.
Chair Blanco, may I make a brief note? First of all, thank you all for the flattering compliments to staff. It's, it's been a great journey for us. But I, I just wanted to note that the, the council would love to have you at their work study on the 23rd to participate. You've really dug into this in a way that the council may or may not have the opportunity to before the work study happens on the 23rd. So if you're able to make it at 7:00 PM on the 23rd, Tuesday, please do. I think they would like to hear your feedback.
Thank you. Do we need to notify them that we're coming or not coming or do we get the invite or how does that work?
So the invite is, is on the website, but we can specifically send you the link as well.
Okay. So we need to let you know or you're just going to send it to us and, or how do you, how do you want us to handle that?
Yeah, it might be nice if you RSVP.
RSVP?
Send me an email to let it, let us know that you're coming and, but otherwise we'll send you all the link.
Okay. Sounds good. Everybody, everybody okay with getting, getting like that?
Yeah, that's perfect.
Okay. Well, we're at number seven. Tentative 2021 Docket Recommendation and Planning Commission Work Program. Rebecca, I think that's you.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
So we are putting together our docket for this year and we came up with a few items that had been kind of pending with staff. The staff is recommending you guys basically recommend to council. We did advertise through the docket process in our code back in October. We did not get any public docket applications. So these are just all basically internal recommendations. Some of them are based on what we see coming down the line and some of them are just cleanups. And so I'll kind of go through each one. One is to amend our municipal code, amend the overlay zones. We want to clean those up for an alternative master plan project as well as some that we feel are no longer necessary and makes more sense to be updated in our comp plan and rezoned. We have, we want to update our capital, capital facilities element. We want to incorporate any planned capital improvements. Normally that would not be on necessarily your docket list. The code allows for us to do that separate from the docket process if it's done at the same time as the budget. However, we did not do it at the same time as the budget, so that's why we have it here on your docket request. One of the reasons we usually put that, those items in the facilities element is because sometimes there are grants that require it to be in the comp plan in order for you to receive the grant. Then we have various zoning and comp plan land use designation amendments. Most of them are related to just cleaning up our parks and public facility designations. They are listed there in the staff report. We do have one more that we, I was asked to put on this list and that includes the Si View Maintenance Shop that's going to be located at 217 East Park. And that would change from DC to PO, to the POSPF. So that one is one that I am recommending verbally to be added to the, the docket list you have there.
It is on the list.
What?
It's, it is on the list there. It's the third bullet down on that.
Oh, I typed it in twice. Sorry. I was told to add it. And then the last one is, is any additional zoning amendments that we might do that is associated with the, with the master plan overlay amendments. So that'll kind of start and come to you guys as a more of a development regulation ordinance. And then we would follow up when we do the comp plan update to include those requirements. This docket list is required to be approved by the city council. So after your recommendation, it goes up to the CED committee and then the council. If the council does approve the docket as proposed, they could also add to it or change it. We put together a little bit of a work program based on the assumption that it is going to be approved. We obviously have a list of applicant projects that we foresee coming, but we could have many more. It's hard to know until those applicants submit their pre-application or move forward. With that, staff is recommending approval of the proposed 2021 docket list and Planning Commission Work Program. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I, I have, I have a question about something that I didn't see on there and, and maybe I just missed it. Whatever happened with growth targets? Is that still going on or was that something that was done and I just forgot about it?
So, yeah, so growth targets are done as part of the comp plan process. It is not something that needs to be on a docket list. It is through the state requirements. Other things that don't necessarily also go on the docket list, just that reminded me is our items that are already part of the council work program and direction. So there are other items that we will work on with you that aren't going to be on those docket list because they are already part of the council direction. But the, the growth targets are being worked on at a staff level and when the comp plan is due, we will be moving forward with that. We actually had already. We actually had already had a discussion, a work study program with the council on the growth targets and got our marching orders to work on securing the numbers that we're looking for.
Okay, and that's still being worked on at the King County level also?
Yes, we're in, we're in the different groups right now negotiating our number, basically, and we've, so far, we're doing good. Jesse can give an update if you'd like, but we're right on target for where we think we should be.
I'll give you 100 units if I can get 300 jobs, right? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we just, if you want any more, I'll just briefly give you. We're in the fifth caucus. Overall, the group's slightly above for housing, but they're going to try to bring it to the G M, the Growth Management Planning Commission with, we were allocated 5%. We're at 5.7%. We're hoping that's okay, so nobody has to do any force trading for housing units.
Okay. Okay, thanks. I just, it's just something that popped in my mind earlier today, and I wasn't sure where it was. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or concerns on the projects for the comprehensive plan and code amendments that were, that are listed here? New commissioners, any, do you get what they're talking about on these codes, I mean, on these abbreviations, what's going on? Do you, I always have to look them up twice myself, so that's why I ask.
Everybody good? No, me too. I just look them up. I just take notes, and then after the meeting, I just study everything we talked about.
Yeah, for clarification, it's basically all pretty much parks and open space. We're changing them from other designations to put them in the parks and open space public facilities zone, instead of leaving some that are employment or low density residential. We're moving them all to parks so that they, you know, because they are some sort of park.
It'd be a nice uncontroversial item, but you never know.
Are these parks, the city parks or the Si View Metropolitan Parks?
It's a mix of both.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other concerns? Okay. Thank you. So we will be, oh, yeah, there we go, so docket, okay. Go back to my page here. Do we need to take any action on that or is that?
Yes, we do need a motion and a vote.
Okay. What, do we like to make a motion on the tentative 2021 docket recommendation?
I can, I can make a motion.
Okay.
I, I would recommend approval of the proposed 2021 docket list and planning commission work program. And I'll second. This is Commissioner Tao.
Commissioner Tao seconds, Mr. Greenberg. Any?
Discussion.
Say it again?
Discussion, any discussion?
Discussion about it at all? We're pretty clear, pretty good with that? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Is that it for tonight? We're going to adjourn. Anybody have anything for the order?
Just a note for your next meeting, and this is going to depend on legal review still, but we are proposing to bring you a downtown housing project development agreement. So you worked a lot on the height issue, and that is certainly a very important issue as all. That is the topic of this development agreement. So this is a project, and we'll get in much more into the details in it at the, when it comes up at the next meeting, but what they're asking for is a slight increase in the allowed height for a project that's up against the river on the very west end of town in exchange for providing some affordable housing. So just a heads up to you that that will be coming, and if not at your next meeting, then the meeting after.
We also are looking at bringing those draft guidelines that we discussed for the overlay zones, the master plan overlay district, so that we can get started on that as soon as possible. So we're hoping to kind of have an introduction of that as well at the next meeting, again, assuming we can get through any legal concerns before then.
Okay. We all good? Any other, any questions you have? Anybody? No? Okay. So I guess we do need a motion then to, let me look at the time. Oh, my gosh. Okay, well, I guess we need a motion to adjourn?
I move for adjourn.
I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Mo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Everybody getting on? Okay. We are adjourned.
Good job for your first meeting, Judy.
Yeah, great work.
Good job, Judy. Do you have a cheat sheet, anybody, for this? No?
I actually just emailed you, asking if you'd like me to make you a cheat sheet for a few meetings. Okay. So I've done it before for new commission chairs. It's not uncommon, and for a few meetings, I could put kind of a script or cheat sheet together for each agenda item, so that you know which ones need actions and which ones need discussions and where to go. And then after a few months, hopefully, you'll, you won't need it anymore, but if you do, just let us know.
And be sure my co-chair, our co-chair gets it as well.
Yes, please. I defer, I second that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you all. Good night.
Everybody.
Thank you.
Bye.